All right, we will bring the West Melbourne City Council regular meeting to order if you would please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, thank you. We, everyone is here, we don't need to do roll call. Presentations, proclamations, Youth Advisory Board, Megan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, did not do the welcome, let me do the, my welcome.
Oh, please do.
All right, so, welcome to the city, West Melbourne's regular council meeting tonight, members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker's card, which are located by the door, and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk who sits at the end of the dais. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all of your comments to city council rather than to individual members. Direct all questions to the chair, speakers will be given up to three minutes. Thank you very much. All right, I'm sorry, Megan, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, it's my honor to present before the council, we have two outstanding young people who wish to be appointed to the Youth Advisory Board. The applicants are named Evelyn Shay and Eishan Vipul. 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 I'm sorry, I'm so bad with that. As you know, this was a, an advisory board that was initiated by council member Adams, and we currently have three individuals that are appointed to this board, and with these two young people, if the council chooses to appoint them, we will have five people and there will still be remaining two vacancies. This board, as you all know, seven resident members, they have to be between the ages of fourteen and seventeen, and they serve for two-year terms. So, I'll tell you a little bit about both of these outstanding young people, and then they are here tonight if the council wishes to ask them any questions. So, beginning with Evelyn, she wants to be an aerospace engineer, which I think is amazing, so she wants to earn her advanced degree, math, science, and technology. She has some volunteer service, working for the Port Ambassadors Program, which sounds really exciting, you get to learn all about Port Canaveral. And she also served on the Children's Hunger Project Youth Council, so that's nice that she already has some experience serving on one of these type of councils. Then the next individual, who I mentioned before, Eishan, he also is an amazing young man, well, he is an amazing young man. He has interest in computer programming and in education. He wants to pursue a graduate degree in computer science and establish a career in the ed tech space, so I think that's outstanding for him as well. He has also volunteered, he was an area manager for the Orlando Math Circle, Summer Math Festival, where he managed a team of ten volunteers for math activities. He also volunteered as a judge for the science fair of the elementary school, so both of these young people, I think, would be well-suited to the board, they are both qualified, and if you would like to ask them questions, they are in the audience.
All right, thank you, Megan. Wishes to the council, you want to speak to the applicants directly? Evelyn, would you like to come up? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Evelyn Shay, I go to Holy Trinity Episcopal Academy, and I'm a junior, and I'm sixteen years old. I want to become an aerospace engineer. As previously mentioned, my stronger subjects are mathematics and sciences like physics, and that's just really what I want to do, and it interests me a lot.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I think your interest in STEM is going to be great, because I think there's a lot of opportunities, especially here in Brevard, for people with interest in regards to STEM. Congratulations on everything you've done in school so far, your application was impressive, so we appreciate you applying. I did note on your application that you had shared that you're looking, in terms of what you would potentially bring as an idea to the board, would be looking for ways to get people involved and sharing their input for the city, but you had looked at mental health awareness, leadership development, or college or career readiness. So how do you see potentially the board implementing something that could reach young people in West Melbourne?
I was thinking like, initiatives, like surveys and forums, to give young, like youth, the opportunity to share their opinions about, like, the direction our county is moving in. And, like, projects about mental health and career research, because I think it's really important, because especially mental health, because it is an issue, a large issue among youth, and career research, because I think it's really important that the youth in Brevard, like, have the opportunity to explore careers, so they have, like, every opportunity to really figure out what they want to do, and I think that's really important.
So you're seeing some potential either collaboration or discussion with the school district as well, to potentially hit on these objects that you're interested in? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on one second, Mr. Frampton, you have a question?
That's more of a statement, a great application, thank you. Just know that I'm excited that we're going to have at least two from the Sawgrass Lakes community representing the youth in, in West Melbourne, so I'm anxious for you guys to get started and, and get out there and do great things. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, go ahead, I won't stop you now, thank you very much. Eishan, would you like to come up? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eishan Vipul, and I would like to start by thanking the West Melbourne City Council for considering me for this position. I'm a junior at West Shore Junior Senior High School, and I have a passion to give back to the community that I grew up in. Over the last ten years, I've lived in West Melbourne, and I've taken advantage of the various opportunities that the city has given me, and I really would like to give back through a position on the Youth Advisory Board. Starting in seventh grade, I was a volunteer at the West Melbourne Public Library, and more recently, I extended my service leadership by starting a math-based nonprofit that aims to educate the youth and make them more passionate about doing math. As a prospective member of the West Melbourne Youth Advisory Board, I'm confident that I'll be able to contribute towards our mission and help the city of West Melbourne.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Frampton?
I was excited to see that you were into computers and software engineering and the such. Any website management kind of stuff have you done, or?
Yes, sir, so I am a volunteer with an organization called Ways for Life, and I'm their website management.
So I know it excites Ms. Adams and myself, because we've been wanting to get our website more in tune with how today's interactive websites are, so we're always looking for ideas, and maybe the youth group can bring them to us.
Yes, sir, that sounds like a great project.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adams.
Again, amazing application, I really appreciate you taking the initiative, not only to apply, but for both of you to come tonight to speak with us, I'm, I'm just excited to see the group slowly coming together, so that we can start moving forward. In your application, you had noted that you were looking forward to initiating potential service projects, and I had underlined specifically increasing STEM interest throughout parts of the community. We had just brought up STEM a couple of minutes ago, so how do you see reaching the community in terms of a STEM sort of service project or initiative?
Sure, so, one thing I would like everyone to think about is, like, when have you had fun in a math class? Normally, when you go to a math class, everyone is really bored, you're just listening to what the teacher is saying, you're taking notes, and it's not really an experience that you walk away from and say, "I want to do that again." So my goal for STEM engagement is for someone to come to our session and say, "I really want to go back to our next one," and learn things about themselves and about their passion for STEM, making them young leaders going forward.
I like, I like the perspective. We'll see how it goes moving forward, those were my questions, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, wishes of the council, Ms. Volts.
Listening to these two and reading some of this stuff here, I was thinking about what I was doing when I was sixteen, and it was nothing like what these guys are doing right here. They are so, so impressive, I have to tell you, that, I, I mean, it's just beyond words how impressive they are, and things that they've already done, and they're only sixteen. So, thank you, Diane, for putting this together, I think it's just an awesome opportunity for the youth in our community.
Shall I take that as a motion?
Yes.
All right, we have, Mr. Bentley.
Second.
All right, thank you.
A motion we're doing.
Mr. Fram, you turned your light off, you don't want to?
I don't have a question.
Okay, all right, all right, so we have a motion on the floor to accept these, find, find people onto our Youth Advisory Council, we have a motion from Ms. Volts and a second from Mr. Bentley, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay, motion carries, seven zero. All right, thank you, did you want to make a comment?
Can I?
Yes, please.
Just wanted to point out, and I'm sure Ms. Adams is excited to get started, now that we have five, we have reached a quorum for the Youth Advisory Council, so I'm sure that's going to start up pretty soon, once you, as Megan would like to say, herd all the cats, and get a, get a starting date.
I already met with Mr. Rowdy yesterday, but we can't move forward until we have the final vote today, so we'll be moving things forward.
Good, awesome.
In the morning. All right, thank you, all right, next is Mr. Rowdy, and he's going to introduce new staff, a new finance director.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council, it is my absolute great pleasure and honor to introduce Keith Smith, our new finance director. With the resignation of Candace Blake, we did a national search and had a great candidate pool to interview from, and went through that process, and low and behold, in our backyard, in, in a city that shall not be named, just a little bit to the north of us, was a Mr. Smith, who brings a great wealth of knowledge, he may look familiar to some of you. Mr. Smith was part of the auditing team that worked for the private firm that audited the city, and decided to take off that hat and put on the good hat, and come over to the good side, and probably take a pay cut, and come over to the, to the public side and work for the beautiful city of West Melbourne. So it is my honor to introduce Mr. Smith as our new finance director, and I believe he has a few words.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
And members of the council, I just want to take this opportunity and thank you and Mr. Rowdy for the opportunity to serve as the city's next finance director. I also want to take this quick opportunity to introduce my wife Christina, who's sitting over here in the corner, who's always been there to support me, and she's here tonight, and I'm grateful that she's here to support me in this endeavor. As Mr. Rowdy said, I've been serving as the city's auditor for the last six years, and I'm actually honored to be on this side of the table now, working with such a great finance team, and I'm looking forward to serving the city in this new capacity, and serving the city of West Melbourne.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
I just had a quick question, if I may. Our finance department is top-notch, we've won recognitions for the previous years due to the hard work of the city leadership team, specifically as, in finance as well, with their support. So what do you see in terms of keeping that bar just as high as it's been to continue that excellence within our city, and specifically within the finance department? What, what do you have as your vision?
Well, I don't want to make any changes right away, I, I see things that are already built, that have been strong, there are strong financial controls in place, we have a strong finance team in place already, it's just a matter of building on what's already been established, and I'm looking forward to working with our finance team and building those things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton?
So, a quick question with the auditing side of what you were doing, has that been severed now, or is it, is this going to be your, are you going to have a side gig with the auditing thing, how's that going to work out for us?
No, sir, this is one hundred percent my thing now.
Okay.
We, we, we have to maintain our independence, you know, both as a city and as the auditing firm, and that's our-
I didn't mean audit here, I meant-
Right, right.
-other, other places.
So, but yes, we have severed that opportunity, and this is one hundred percent my, my priorities at the time.
Awesome, and welcome.
So now that we have two from CRI, we shouldn't have any dings at all.
Well, this is what I would tell you, Mayor, I've only been on the job for seven days, so I can't tell you what has happened up until this point, because our audit period's going to cover through nine thirty of this year. I can only promise that it will work and do our best to make sure that those things are alleviated in the future.
I'm sure you will, thank you very much, Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you.
Time for photo. All right, Mr. Rowdy, you want to, I guess you can do that, next intro is Jacobs, Brian Masher.
Hi. Oh, there we go, I am very happy and honored to introduce the entire Jacobs team, for everybody watching online, they are in the pink shirts, they came in force, and our sewer director, Brian Masher, is going to lead us through the 2024 annual report, it's all yours, Brian.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight, in front of you, you have a scaled-down version of this most current report. Along tonight with me is the maintenance supervisor, Dungy Fuller, my regional manager, Andy Roush, and your operational manager, Chase Gibson. With that said, we'll just jump right in, we've got a lot of factoids this year, so basically what you see is, you know, self-explanatory, if you have questions, we're more than willing to answer those. This last thirteen years, you know, we've had over a thousand days of no safety incidents, which is huge, in this industry, it's, people don't always go home the way they start their day, it's, it's sad, but it does happen, but we're, we've gone over a thousand days, which is awesome. Jumping down, we've had over, let's see, a thousand-plus hours with technical support from Jacobs that wasn't charged to the city, so we bring a, a level of service that, you know, it's not talked about much, but I wanted to let you know that there's more people working besides what you see here in front of you. The next slide, after this one, is just talking about our thirteen years commitment, commitment to the operational excellence, and continues with that, next slide. This is your staff, lists the staff and their, their expertise, and I wanted to mention this past year, we lost one of our members who had been serving the city for twenty-two years, good man, he was always here for West Melbourne, and very well-liked, but we'll miss him, just wanted to mention that. Next slide. This slide represents some of our interns that we've had, we bring in local folks, most recent was an FIT student, he's moved on to fulfill his career, but currently, we just had another FIT student sit in internship with us for eight weeks, and he'll probably be worth us full-time, he'll be a mechanical engineer, after, you know, hours working with us, he'll be studying for that, so we're trying to develop local staff, like, everyone here wants to build our community that we live in. The next step, this is just our value-added, our services that we have, that we've been providing to the city, as you can see, you can read it, they're pretty much bullets that we wanted to present to you, so if you had any questions, we can answer to that. And the next slide, this slide represents a lot of our activity in our facility, our plant flows, you know, compared to our rain flows, where the reuse water is going, where the effluent is going, it talks about our laboratory performance for our plant, we've been in compliance all year, so we're just doing a good job for, for the age of the facility. Next slide, here's an operator, she came in as a trainee, she just recently received her license, so she's starting her career with us, a local lady, the story behind this, her dad used to work for West Melbourne, so now his, his daughter is with us now on our team, which is really neat, so we're developing her career path. And with that said, I'm just going to turn it over to Andy.
Excellent. Next slide. So, performing maintenance on the existing utility infrastructure is absolutely vital to ensure reliability, resilience, and Brian and the team have spent a lot of time during this last twelve-month period, performing preventive maintenance, the industry standard generally is eighty percent preventative, twenty percent corrective, if you're doing more than that, you're really excelling within the industry, and Brian and the team have delivered north of ninety percent preventive maintenance over this last period. The team's also been intrinsically involved in supporting capital improvement projects that help modernize, you know, the utility infrastructure, as well as enhance performance, deliver a long-term value to the city. A few different photos down there, you can see in some bullet points around specific projects that the team's been involved in. Next slide. Brian touched on it, safety, super important, the team has gone one, well, it's more than a thousand days, actually, I looked it up today, it's one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight days exactly today, of no recordable incidents, which is, you know, for that period, everyone has come to work and gone home the same way that, that they were, which is very, very important, that takes a lot of effort, that's more than three years that, that they've accomplished that, which is, which is impressive, so we're always looking for opportunities to improve safety, to look at the different processes and protocols, to evaluate new mitigation methods, personal protective equipment, there's a lot of different types out there, so, you know, we're always looking to take the input of staff, we created something recently called the Safety Culture Improvement Program, which allows staff and encourages them to lean in, to kind of, from the ground up, identify safety issues and ways that we can improve the safe manner that we deliver the work, and so we're driving it from the top down, and we're driving it from the bottom up as well, so very, very serious about safety. Next slide. Being involved in the community is an equally important part of, of what we do, a lot of people in our team, you know, West Melbourne is their home, I, I love coming here every time to present to the council and to support the team. This year, as in almost every year, we are serving the community, we are donating blood during the quarterly blood drives, we are donating towards the West Melbourne Police Department Elves Run event, which is a fantastic event, I, I love that we're part of that, as well as the Central Florida Autistic Society for Children, and I think, you know, the donation of backpacks and supplies to local students is another way that we like to be involved in the community and help, you know, help mutual success. So, as far as sustainability goes, doing what we do, protecting the environment, doing it in a sustainable way, is very, very important to us. Jacobs and, and the city have participated in the FPL Load Power Management Program again, which has netted, you know, north of forty-three thousand dollars of savings to the city over the last twelve months, which is important. And Brian and the team, at the, at the grassroots level, are maximizing every opportunity they can to recycle things like gloves, batteries, plastics, cardboard, you know, polymer totes, anything that we can recycle and, and not have as single-use, you know, the team is focused on doing that. So, next slide. So what's next? You know, continuing to provide great service, continuing to be timely in our response to any concerns, continuing to emphasize safety and to encourage and empower our people to gain new credentials, new licenses, which help them in their career path, support the city as you move through this exciting new RO water treatment plant process, as well as the, the BNR upgrade, which is going to happen at the wastewater plant, so a lot of really exciting things, and Jacobs is certainly honored to serve the city of West Melbourne and, and look forward to doing so for many years to come. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Jacobs as we stand here? No, I just want to say, I do brag about you all the time when I'm out and people ask who we use, and I tell them right off, and how, how wonderful you've been, and I do appreciate your recycling of the batteries and the plastics and the aluminum, I did not expect you to give blood, I just think that might be just expecting a bit much, but I'm glad you put it out there. Mr. Bentley has a comment?
Yes, thank you. How many employees do we have working for West Melbourne here, contract, is it thirteen or so? And what's your turnover rate?
This year, very high, we hate to say it, but we asked some to leave, some decided to move on for other, you know, advantages or opportunities, but it was extremely high out of all the years I've been associated with this site, it was, I don't know the percentage, but it was more than ever before.
How many?
I want to say seven, seven, out of-
So half, half your staff turned over?
I, I think there's a, there's a very strong local labor market at the moment. I think there's a very strong local labor market at the moment. There's, you know, we've seen some people move on to opportunities with the county. We've seen people move on to other opportunities with other cities. I think the competitiveness out there and the labor market is a real issue right now. And, you know, I think Jacobs does do a very good job of identifying new candidates and bringing them on and schooling them up. But what we truly desire is to minimize that and to, you know, allow people to develop and grow and kind of create a legacy of their own, you know.
Do you know what the turnover rate was last year?
We can certainly find out for you.
Estimate. I'm not trying to be exact.
I would say maybe four or five, probably.
Or four to five the year before. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton?
I just wanted to thank you guys for representing Breast Cancer Awareness Month in your shirts and not Pepto-Bismol. So it's just making sure that everybody knows what the pink is for. So thanks, guys. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Lot of a well-planned strategy.
Thank you. All right, our next are public hearings. 3120 Sharon Avenue. I don't know if it's Sharon or Sharon Avenue. Mr. and Ms. Fisher. There are no modifications to the agenda.
Okay, if you could give us a minute, please. Just for the record, I'm Kristi Fisher. I'm the city's planning director. And when we present these agenda items, it's to explain what the business item is that's in front of you. We'll go with that, if that's the only thing that's there. Yeah, that's an old one. I apologize about the confusion. We had an update to this, but we're going to go with what we have here. So let's start about, you know, the title of this request is Request to Vacate and Ban in Public Utility Easement. It's not an item that we bring as a planning department to the city council very often, so I thought I'd go through and do a little explanation. What is an easement? A lot of people confuse easements with setbacks, with right-of-way. It all just seems sort of like a blur, but they're very distinct things in our world. So the first bullet really tells you, you know, slivers of private property that allow utilities, storm drainage, or other subdivision infrastructure to be placed on an individual lot. It's not the same as property setbacks. So an easement is still owned by the private property owner. It just allows other entities to go on and do their utility work or whatever that easement purpose might be for. Buildings and other structures are not allowed in easements. So easements are also not the same thing as a right-of-way. So all the streets that you, we all drive on, those are road right-of-ways. Sometimes you have other right-of-ways, but those are not easements. It's a different animal. Those are owned by other entities. And there's many different types of easements. In this case, we're just going to focus on, you know, really one type. But this graphic was to show you that there could be an access easement. There could be a dedicated pipeline easement. We have that over by I-95. So there's other types. But that's sort of the broad view of what is an easement. The city does have a specific process in our codes for vacating a public easement. And that's why I've listed, you know, the first section as a first step. You know, there's an applicant, and that's highlighted in blue. Andrew Poshock, he is in the audience, and he will answer, you know, questions about 3120 Sharon Avenue. And then the second step is for staff, administrative staff, the review of what has been submitted. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. So the background of this case is that, you know, you all as council are going to decide whether to vacate a 1.4-foot-wide by 36.6-foot-long portion of the public utility easement. I know that's, you know, pretty precise, but it kind of has to be because we're talking about a house. And it runs under this particular little sliver that's shown in red. And that aerial doesn't mean that that is drawn to scale. So please don't, you know, look at it and say, is it a quarter? Is it half? Is it whatever? That's just to give you an idea of where that portion of the west wall of the house is located. That's it. It's in the Crystal Lake subdivision, so it's Lot 66. And there is a utility easement with a water line sort of straddling between Lots 66 and 67. So the third bullet down, I tell you, 3130 Sharon Avenue to the west also has a part of that eight-inch diameter water line. The current status is there is a 10-foot-wide by 120-foot-long easement on Lot 66. Just like on Lot 67, there's the same dimension. So this was all part of Crystal Lake's west in the plat, the subdivision plat that came to the city years ago. This is another view of that easement. And if you look on, in the left side of the screen, you have the blue, and it covers that. When you add up the two 10-foot easements, it becomes 20 feet. And like I said, the water line, you can see from the aerial image on the right, it's not exactly on the property line. The red sort of is the property lines, but it's wrong. The property appraiser still hasn't done the ortho-rectification of the property line. So please don't ask me why a property line is in, you know, Flanagan Avenue. That's incorrect. It's just to kind of give you a visual. Now, these items, I'm going to ask the applicant to talk to you about a little bit more. I did point this out in the staff report. The house was built in 2011, and there was an incorrect survey that showed a 5-foot-wide easement. You just heard me talk about the 10-foot-wide easement. The house was sold in 2011 and 2021. And the error of the west wall of the house encroaching up to 1.4 feet and the correct easement spacing was not detected. Okay? Then you have a house sale currently. And again, Mr. Poshock can tell you a little bit more about that if you guys want to hear about that. But the error was identified in the transaction, and the original surveyor, you know, can tell you a little bit about that. This vacate allows the west wall of the house to remain rather than penalize the homeowner for the past easement error. The third step for staff in looking at a vacative easement is the utility information. So we already described the eight-inch water line. Are there any other utilities, any other features that, you know, could be in what's called a public utility and drainage easement? So we contact all the utility companies, whether they're public or private. We talked about the public. And just to let you know, the private, there are no private utility easements or utilities in this portion of the easement. So that's all part of sort of the due diligence we do before we bring this item to city council. The next question is, will the vacate hurt the city utilities? And so to answer that, you know, we looked at it. We talked to our public works department. This one segment of water line, that's the blue line that's going up and down on that aerial, is not impacted. There's two other lines in other locations, which allows water service redundancy in Crystal Lakes. And then I also need to point out there's not quite 18 feet, but there's almost 18 feet of width in that area. If the city has to go in, there's a broken, you know, water line. They have to do something to it. There's enough area for them to be able to operate in there. So the next steps, if city council does approve this vacative easement, staff has to put a legal advertisement in the newspaper. And part of that is advertising what portion of the easement would be abandoned. So it has a legal description to go along with that advertisement. And again, just to make sure everyone understands, there's no change to anybody's property with this vacative easement. So we've, in the past, brought to you all vacative right-of-way, and that's a case when there is a change. But again, there's no change that happens as a result of the vacate of easement. This document would be recorded, and that's why it's in a resolution. And it would clear up the issue of the house wall being on the easement at 3120 for any future property transactions. So in conclusion, after staff has done its analysis, we're recommending that council approve Resolution Number 2025-23. And the applicant had provided us with this image. And even though we have sort of a yellow area highlighted, it's really a very small rectangle within there that would be vacated. It was just sort of to draw our attention to, see the lettering for L1, L2, L3. Those are legal description identifiers. So with that, I'll try to answer questions. But like I said, the applicant is here, and he could also answer some of the questions.
All right, Mr. Frampton, do you want to ask your question now or after Mr. Poshock?
I'll ask. What's the depth of the eight-inch pipe? The depth of the eight-inch pipe?
Depth of what?
We'd have to get back to you on that.
So I know-
It's probably somewhere between 3 and 5 feet.
And currently, with city easements, you don't allow fencing to be put up over top of the easements, correct?
That's not correct. What happens is that fences are allowed to cross over easements. And so that's what you'll find here. There is a note, a sort of like a hold harmless statement when those homeowners get their fence permits that state that if the city has to come in and do any repairs or any other utility company, those can be taken down.
So this is not crossing over. This is running along with the easement. Is that different? Or is that-
It is. So they have a fence. I don't have the image here, but I believe the applicant has an image. There is-
I know a lot of the easements that we have, we don't allow the fencing put up because sometimes it tends to interfere with the pipe or-
We don't allow- We don't allow it to run concurrent with the pipe, but it can run-
Alongside?
It can run over.
Well, isn't this concurrent?
I'm not saying that right.
Parallel? Isn't this parallel with the pipe?
We allow it to run, we don't, we try not to allow it to run parallel unless they give us the hold harmless. You can run perpendicular.
Well, they do that across the back, I'm assuming.
Yeah, across the back. That one would be allowed.
There is a fence down the center?
I'm sorry?
There is a fence between the two properties?
There is, yeah. And like I tried to say, I mean, it's hard to see from this image, but that water line is not exactly on the property line. So the fence probably is on their shared property lines. The water line is just slightly askew.
Okay. And you said there is, the fence runs all parallel with the pipe?
Yeah, we do allow it with a hold harmless that indicates that they would have to, they'd be responsible for-
Do we have that?
We would be happy to check. I did not check that before this meeting.
Because the other thing is, you know, obviously, if we had to get workers down there, the fence from either of the two properties would be a problem.
It would be removed, yeah, and then replaced.
So we would need home harness?
Yeah, the hold harmless just protects us from us taking the fence down in the heat of a water main break and then them saying we damaged the fence.
But it's still at their cost if we had to take it down.
It's at their cost. They know the risk by putting the fence on our utility easement.
We need to ensure that it's there. I guess the same thing with the property next to it. We would need to make sure that-
Well, it depends, yeah. It depends who took the permit out for the-
Well, if they have fences or-
It's just one fence, so it'd be, I'm assuming one of them put up a fence.
Hopefully, they got a permit.
And hopefully, they got a permit.
Okay. And would it make any sense to, instead of the exact 1.4 foot, to go like 1 and 1/2 foot? I mean, does it make any sense there to give you that extra?
It's actually, we, with that 1.4 feet, we have built in a little cushion.
Okay, so-
So it's already been taken.
So you already did that?
That's a good point, yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Resolution Number 2025-23, as written.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
I have questions, but I'll second it and then ask the questions.
Okay. It is a public hearing. Hold on. I'm sorry, I'm moving way too fast here, but thank you.
Take your motion back.
Thank you. You'll hold it? Okay. All right, Mr. Bentley, your question? Did you want to ask the, of Ms. Fisher now, or do you want to wait for Mr. Poshock?
I can do it.
He has a chance to present.
I think she can answer mine. Cynthia. Kristi, the, you said the fence was not properly located. True?
And I don't know. I don't know whether it's properly located. I said it's probably on the property line. It's the water line that is not exactly on that property line that's between 66 and 67.
That's what I meant to say. So then my question becomes, is that water line in the favor of the offending, essentially offending homeowner? Otherwise, I want it to be further away from their property because you're reducing the amount of space we have.
It is. It's a little bit further.
It's to our benefit. It's to the benefit of-
To our benefit, yes. We would be able to get in there. And something that, you know, Mr. Rhodey and I talked about is if you all try to picture, you know, I'm sure you've had hoses that have busted and stuff, and you know what that looks like. You know, please realize that if this happens, normally, the homeowners are all too happy for the city to stop that geyser in their yard.
Yeah, yeah, I know. A lot of shoes are here. And I'm not sure I liken it, you have a chart on page 5A-5 that basically lists the utility companies. And it says, no objection. That's great. But it has several that says none received. Now, I think you just said there's only a water main Now, I think you just said there's only a water main in this case going through there.
That's right.
Which means that's the city's decision.
That's right.
Basically, and we're okay with it. But is it normal to get these none received, no response received? Because I wouldn't like that, actually. I like to know, yes or no, is it a problem for you? But if they don't have anything there, I get it. But why don't they just send something back that says, we're fine with it because we don't have anything there?
They don't. And remember, I've been doing this since 2007 with the city, and only about half of them reply. And if there is something like a right-of-way that we want to vacate and we have water and sewer and we see overhead, for example, FPNL, we will dog whoever we can see. Or let's say we had a little manhole cover that said something else on it. You know, gas would be an example. Then we would, you know, go after the gas company and say, hey, you know, we sent you a letter, you didn't respond. But that's part of the reason for going to the field, looking at it, seeing that really the only thing that you have that lines up with that water line are the water meters.
Okay, so if Florida Power Light did have a power line underground there, you would have forced them to give you an answer.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Poshak, did you want to, this is a public hearing, but do you have an opportunity to speak?
He has some photos he wants to share with you.
Christie, can you just tell us what the alternative would be if we didn't approve it?
Well, if you didn't approve it, you heard me say that there was a sale in 2011 and in 2021. It wasn't found then. It's not that the city is going to compel them to take down that wall. It is a nonconformity. So if, for example, for some reason, the house were, you know, almost totally demolished by natural causes, et cetera, they would have to comply with what that easement is and not build, you know, a wall into the easement. But up until then, it's really, if there's transactions, it's between, you know, the buyer, the seller, and the title attorneys.
And when you say a wall, that's the structure of the house, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. We have any questions for Mr. Poshak? Or Mr. Poshak, did you just want to make a statement?
Andrew Poshak, AAL Land Surveying, 3970 Minton Road. We performed the boundary survey for the building permit in 2010. And in the process of the drawing of the survey, we neglected to show the 10-foot public utility easement, showed the five-foot standard easement plus the seven-and-a-half-foot building setback. And that was an error on our part that wound up placing the home within the portion of the 10-foot easement that's within this lot. So we're here to apply for the vacation process to correct that area where the house is over top of the easement. Here for any questions?
Thank you. I don't have any lights on.
That's not your house, though, right?
It is not my house, no.
You didn't do this to benefit yourself?
No. And it wasn't to benefit anything. It was just an error.
Right.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adams.
My quick comment was just thank you for bringing the error forward so we can address it.
Certainly, as soon as we discovered it, we made the application to correct it.
All right, thank you very much. I don't have any other lights on. No one else has a question. This public hearing, we do not have any public comment questions. So we will close the public hearing. I also have a question. Mr. Carey, since the house is actually in the easement and the water line is not exactly right down the center, and they would have had 10, we, being they, would have had 10 foot on each side of where the water line may or may not be to work. Now they have a foot and a half short. Do we not need some kind of the hold harmless to, in case any of our equipment should hit the side of the house? I know Ms. Fisher said that they built in a cushion. Should there be a hold harmless in case there's damage to the house?
So I think part of the issue, we don't need one, is because the, as Ms. Fisher noted, the pipe isn't, you know, isn't centered on the easement, so it's on the other side. So it provides enough of a cushion where it's not really necessary.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we covered that. Thank you very much. All right, any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton and a second from Mr. Bentley. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you. All right. Water rate adjustment, Mr. Rhodey.
Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council, I bring forward something that we have traditionally done in the past, and I'm certainly recommending we continue. The City of Melbourne is who we currently purchase for another 450 days. Our water through in the City of Melbourne went through a process, a public hearing process, and ultimately decided to do a rate increase of 10 and 1/2 percent each year for the next five years for water. I bring in front of you this evening a request to do, to mirror that increase for the next two years, as we won't need it after that, as we'll have our own water plant. The reason we have traditionally mirrored the City of Melbourne's rate increase is due to that we purchased the water and we have our water bill set up into two sections of the water bill, a fixed cost, which is our ability to charge the customers for our crews that maintain the lines, our maintenance of those lines, our testing and our equipment that we go into our water utility. The second portion of the bill is based on volume or usage, and so we have kept those two sections separate in order to be able to accurately bill the customers of West Melbourne who purchase the water exactly what we pay. Our goal is, and it's, of course, not perfect to the penny, but we try to get it as perfect as we can to bill our customers what we purchase of the water. What gets complicated each time we do this is that we, we purchase water from Melbourne at a per gallon rate, so it's total amount of gallons times the price. The way that the City of West Melbourne has been set up is that we have a conservation payment schedule or payment design. And so our lower volume customers pay less per gallon than our larger customers. And that, of course, is designed to help encourage water conservation. And so in a perfect world, I'd be able to just raise all those rates 10 and 1/2 percent, and that dollar amount would equal exactly what the increase is to Melbourne. But we don't live in a perfect world. We live in a world that requires us to do a pretty complicated equation in order to balance that out. And so what you have is the first two tiers of our rate structure, which essentially is the vast majority, let's call it 80% of our water customers, our residential, single families, if you will. They are on the first two tiers, so that's zero to 3,000 gallons and then 3,000, 7,000 gallons. And then the second two tiers are more of our commercial or industrial. So your car wash, your apartment building, your schools, those kinds of facilities are on the higher end, and so they pay more than the per gallon for the residential. And so you have to work those numbers in order to keep that balance. We try to keep that, the spread that we have had in existence for many years, we try to keep that spread consistent. And so what that results in is about a 10.4, 10.5 percent increase for those first two tiers, closer to 10.4. And then for those higher tiers, it's more like 10.9 percent increase for the higher tiers, for the larger water volume customers. And so we are here before you this evening to ask to pass this rate increase along from Melbourne to our customers so that we can implement. The other interesting item of note is Melbourne instituted that increase for October 1. They bill us, and so we won't get that first bill until November 1 of that increase. And so that's why we always mirror them the couple of weeks behind, because then we'll implement this so that it starts and takes effect when we're actually paying the higher cost. So we're not trying to, again, not trying to benefit or lose money on this transaction, just trying to find an equitable way to pass it along to our existing water customers. You'll also note that we have a handful of customers outside the city. And so built into our ordinance is a 10% increase higher for residents outside the City of West Melbourne than inside the City of West Melbourne. And I believe that number is sitting around 26 customers. So it's not a, it's not a large number by any means of customers outside the city.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn my light off first. The staff report, I'm looking at 5B2, estimates that the current base rate, should we move forward at this, looks to be an overall increase for residents at $3.23 a month. So looking at that number, if we're looking at the 4,000 gallons of water used per month for a typical residential customer, that's kind of where I'm going with my question and why I'm asking. With the new water plant, as we work on it and eventually coming online, the goal is to provide our residents with higher quality water for the same, if not a little bit lower rate than they would have been paying, have we not invested in the water plant? Knowing that the City of Melbourne is continuing to pass these rate increases, is that statement still holding true by our projections?
So, great, great topic. Let's look at it from a couple of different perspectives. So I'll take the easy one. We are, of course, passing this along because we, the utility doesn't have a lot of money that it can just eat in a rate increase. And so this is keeping us even with the water that we're purchasing. They have a five-year rate increase of 10 and 1/2 percent each year for five years. We are asking for the two years that we'll be purchasing water to mirror that, and then we are not going to be looking for a rate increase that third year. So the first year we are in operations, our water will be 10 and 1/2 percent cheaper than Melbourne's water. If you extrapolate that out for the next three years or the full five years of the increase, we'll be 31 and 1/2 percent cheaper by year five, five from now, than Melbourne's water. Our pro forma shows our water utility operating very well, partly because the cost of the water plant hasn't come in as high as projected. We've been able to get grants and save money on the project, and so we're not spending all the money that we anticipated for the water plant project. And so I cannot promise at this point in time, because the water plant isn't built yet, but I think that is a conversation that we will have when the water plant is built, what to do with our water rate. Do we need to keep it where it will be at that point? Or will we have some flexibility to lower that? I just won't know that answer until we get through another $47 million of construction, because I don't know what's going to, I don't know what's going to happen in the next 450 days to know that, you know, everything's going to go to plan.
Fair.
So I think that's, at that point, really, the conversation at that point is twofold because the other item that we have talked about is, once we are making our own water, do we want to evaluate how our water bill is set up and go to, you know, there's kind of two ways to approach the water bill, the usage and a fixed rate, or to blend that into one rate and just have a rate for each water bill. And I think at that time, when the plant is up and running and we know all those costs and we know where the water utility stands, will be a great time to be able to evaluate those options.
Understood. I'm just trying to think more so towards the future because I don't know if the rest of council got neighbors asking the same way mine did, but 10% sounds like a lot to some residents and then.
Each year.
Right.
For five years.
And then we look at the dollar amount, and the dollar amount, for many people, may be doable, but fixed income residents, I'm sure, are stressed about any increases. So when we're thinking ahead to how these rates are going to affect families, we're excited about a water plant. I just want to make sure that we continue to be able to follow through with what we're hopefully envisioning, especially with our water rate.
Yeah, and it's been four years since we touched the fixed rate portion of the bill, which I consider to be the West Melbourne portion of the bill. I know it's both West Melbourne because we're billing it, but I look at the usage part of the bill as a pass-through. I look at the fixed as part of our operation. It's our employees, it's our trucks, it's our pipes, it's the maintenance that we do on those day-to-day.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. I like to think that I hold the adage of trust but verify. And I broke out my Excel spreadsheet today, and Mr. Rhodey was kind enough to sit on the phone with me for 45 minutes because my numbers weren't working out to his numbers. So it is extremely complicated as far as the formula goes. I finally did get it worked out and was able to verify all the numbers. I do caution you in saying that it's, won't go up, it won't go up the rate that Melbourne's going up, I'm sure, but as our pipes get older, I was surprised to hear, I was surprised on two things, that we have a leakage rate of probably 10% of water, and that's low. That was my second, that's low. So as our city gets older, the leakage rate's going to go up, and it's going to cost us more to fix these things. So I'm going to, costs are going to go up. So it's not going to stay the same forever. So just know that. And, you know, this is an exciting time for us, but I don't think we, we need to cover the costs for the Melbourne, the Melbourne increase. So I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Do we have any cards? We have no cards. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Carey, would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 2025-23, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Vard County, Florida, amending section 58-98A, monthly potable water rates, providing for severability interpretation, providing for the repeal of ordinances and resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for incorporation into the code of ordinances, providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton?
Make a motion. We approve the first reading ordinance, 2025-23.
Thank you. Ms. Maguire?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton and a second from Ms. Maguire. Ms. Voss, did you have a question before we?
I do have a question. Because I know that the water rate is $3.00 and something, but people hearing over 10%, that seems like a lot of money if you think about anything going up over 10%, you know. Do we have to say 10%? Can we just say $3.23? I mean, I mean, does it?
Eighty cents per thousand gallons.
Yeah. I'm just saying, is that something, because, you know, for the average person who's maybe listening online, they go, oh, my God, 10%?
Yeah, I think.
It's a hard pill to swallow.
Right. Part of the disconnect is they, they know what their monthly utility bill from us is, and they hear 10%. So they think 10% of that whole bill.
The whole thing, yeah.
Half that bill is sewer.
I know.
And the other half is water. And then of your water bill, it's only half of your water bill is your usage. The other part is your fixed costs, right? So it's, it's kind of like 10 and 1/2 percent of a quarter of your utility bill. So.
We can't just say $3.00 and something. No.
I'm happy to call it whatever you'd like, but.
All right. Is that, are you finished, Ms. Voss?
All at a West Melbourne increase. Melbourne increase there.
Yes, Melbourne, yes. All right, so we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton and a second from Ms. Maguire. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you. Public forum, we have any cards for public forum? We do not. All right, we'll close the public forum. Consent agenda. Ms. Adams?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, both A and B.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton? All right, we have a motion on the floor for Ms. Adams and a second from Mr. Frampton on the consent agenda. Please, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Next item, action agenda, non-consent, annual street resurfacing. I'll turn it.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I am very happy to turn the next part of this meeting over to our Public Works Director, Mark Picorillo. I believe the next three items are his to present this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Yes, this is the first of three agenda items for tonight. This is our annual resurfacing program that we've been doing since I've been here, so this will be the ninth year of doing it. We've got a total of 10 roads that we are going to be double micro-surfacing, which we've been doing steady now, and one road that we're going to be milling paving due to the condition of it. We're continuing to work with asphalt paving systems, which we have been working for the past nine years with, and this year we're going to be piggybacking off the Sumster County contract. So with that, we have budgeted $600,000 for this year, and the bid amount came out to $599, 543, 91 for the 10 roads and the one-mill and paved road. So it's with, I'd like to allow the city manager to word the contract to Asphalt Paving Systems Incorporated for this year's resurfacing.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton?
Mark, refresh my memory. Refresh my memory on, we always talk about how bad Henry is, and I never see it come up on this sheet, and I, maybe, maybe Mr. Rhodey wants to talk about it, but we keep talking about it and we don't get to it. We continue to work on the engineering. We have found a solution that will be coming forward with this council here soon. We, one of the items that is delaying that action is, we have made a state appropriation request to replace the box culvert at Doherty and Henry, but we did budget $2 million for the Henry Avenue project and all that information and the process that we're looking at will be coming forward to the council. It'll be a separate initiative. Yep, yeah. The Henry project can certainly understand the confusion. We're talking about paving and the maintenance, but the Henry, we're kind of past the micro-seal solution on Henry. And so we've, Mark and his team have been working on an alternative and under review, and then we're going to need to add some ingress egress extensions. And so we're looking at putting that all together and get a cost and then come to the council to approve that project. Will we have the ability to piggyback contracts on that as well, or is that something? There is an option, but we have a couple more things to work through before we can present that project. But Henry is certainly not getting any better, shall we say, on a daily basis. And so we, but we do have $2 million this year and plan to do Henry this year. I'll make the motion that we allow the city manager to word the contract Asphalt Paving Systems, Inc., as written.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton makes the motion. I'm looking for Mr. Gaylord.
One second.
All right, we have a second from Mr. Gaylord. All right, we have a second from Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Picarello. Next item is install custom shade covers over existing Field of Dreams playscape.
Correct. This came up, I believe this was a, from the parks study, that one of the ideas was to move forward with putting shade over there. I know some of the council members have brought this up before. So what we did was, we went out and we got three quotes. Out of the three quotes, the designs for all three were basically similar, seven shades to cover the majority of the playscape. And what we did was, the company that's installing the two covers now at Westbrook and Clementswood, through Omnia Contract, which we belong to, came in as the lowest bid at 202, $795. So they installed the Westbrook playscape for us this past year, and it's just a good company to work with. So like I said, we went out and got two other quotes just to make sure we were in a good price range with the, with the original quote we got. And you could see the two figures that we, that came in close.
All right, thank you. Ms. Vols, did you have a question?
No, I wanted to make a motion.
Yeah.
Did not do that yet?
Yes, you can. You can do that now. We'll still take questions. Go ahead. Did you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the installation of the sale shades at the Field of Dreams by-
Can you speak into your microphone, please?
Yeah, I'm kind of short and I can't reach it sometimes, so sorry. Yeah, oh, here I am. She's pushing me over, pushing me around. Geez. Sorry.
She's like that.
Make a motion to approve the award and purchase of installation of seven new shades for the Field of Dreams from playscape, from Game Time and Playcore Company for 202,795.95.
All right, thank you Ms. Vols. Mr. Frampton?
Second with a question.
All right, your question?
Bless you, bless you.
What was the number you quoted? Ms. Vols? Mark, how's it work with this Omnia Partners? Did they go out and find Game Time or, and then we went out and got two more bids? Or how's that work? Isn't that technically a bid? So wouldn't we have gotten three bids instead of two?
Correct, that's correct. But because we're a part of Omnia ourselves, the city is, as a purchase and agent through Omnia, we don't really have to go out and get quotes. We just wanted to do that to make sure-
That's a site that we put it up, that we want to do the project and then-
No, we contacted Game Time because they had, we ordered them the other two parks. So we-
I'm confused on what Omnia Partners is.
Omnia Partners, Omnia is a nationwide corporate that, purchasing agency that you go through. Same as the Sheriff's Contract and same as Sourcewell. So we belong to that as a city.
But don't we put up, when we want something, we put it up and then people bid on it from those?
We could, that's, that's part of it, yes. But when we belong to something and, like for vehicles for instance, like the next item coming up through Sourcewell. So if we're looking for a certain product or a certain service and one of these three, one of these three organizations are offering that service, we don't have to go out to bid because we belong to it. We just wanted to go out to bid, we just wanted to get three quotes just to make sure, because when the first price came in at around 200,000, you know, we were, the city manager was like, geez, not really a good price. So that's why we reached out to a few other-
And I'm guessing Omnia has other vendors too that we could have also checked with them as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I was just confused because it says that we went out to two vendors and then technically in my mind, it's three vendors that we got quotes from.
Technically, yes, but we just wanted to make sure-
Yeah, we, we took an extra step on this one because of the cost. Because, because it got to $200,000, we wanted to make sure and do a little price checking and so-
Trust me, everybody wants shade these days.
It is.
In our community as well, so.
And people like-
Of the thousand, or of the million dollars budgeted for Parks and Rec this year, this is 202,000. I know we've bitten into that before on some other things. Where are we at with the million? Now how depleted is that?
Yeah, so we're still sitting somewhere around 710.
So that much.
We've got the sign item that we deferred last time. We've got some designs coming for the council to review. We've got a RFQ out for the Tallwood Park redesign that'll be coming to the council to approve that redesign.
For this year's budget.
That's for this year.
Does that expire?
But those are all, another million in. New million for starting 10-1.
So we did, we only spent like 25% of what we had budgeted? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you Mayor, just a couple of quick questions, Mr. Picarello. The staff report for this item indicates that they're custom sale shades. And forgive me for asking, just because it wasn't outlined and I didn't see it in any of the details in our documents, but is there a difference between custom versus, do they offer standard sale shades? And if there is a difference, because they're telling us these are custom, is there a reason that our Field of Dreams playscape needs a custom set?
It's, it's the size of the shades, the sales themselves. You could go to Costco, Walmart and buy a sale that's a certain size, but these are obviously made to the size of what they're, what they're covering.
So we had to either submit the size of our playscape or they came out and measured it?
They came out, you could see, there is a photo, they came out and measured and did all that to get the most shade we can get covering all the playscape.
Okay, do we know the life expectancy of the set?
There is a, there is a warranty.
10-year, okay.
Yeah. Actually, it's quite extensive.
As long as you take it down during the named storms and you do everything we're supposed to do.
Right.
And we do take them down.
That was gonna be my last question was, I'm assuming we are then planning to take them down for hurricanes?
Down over the splash pad.
Okay.
I think these are rated for 90 miles an hour too.
But just because they're rated highly, we still want to take, I'm just checking, we still want to take them down for our peace of mind. Okay.
We have a-
We, we take them down because we, we don't want to have to come to this body and say, even though they were supposed to be for 90 miles an hour, they did not make it. So we, we do, you know, as Director Picarello mentioned, we do take them down at the splash pad. Now the, any of the new ones that we have, we will take down if we ever in the, hopefully, we are not in the cone this year. But if we get into the cone, that's one of the operating procedures is to get those down and tuck them away into the facility.
Thank you. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire?
A couple of questions on my end. So once these are like purchased, how long typically does it take for them to come in, get installed?
It's probably gonna be a few months before that happens, probably a little bit longer. We're still waiting on the ones for Westbrook and Clementswood. So I know that's been about three months now. I know they've been held up obviously by weather, but we just got the locates. So they're looking to start them in about two weeks. So hopefully, it'll probably be a little bit before they-
Okay. And do we know, I guess we haven't done it yet, but do we know approximately how long it like puts the area down? Or does it affect like people being able to come for them to install them?
It'll probably put it down as they put all the anchors in, set all the posts. And then after that, it shouldn't be bad because now it's just ladder work from there. So they could, we could open it and work through the, through the park.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton?
Mr. Rhodey, you mentioned that we, we do take the, the sails down. We are getting quite a few of them. Do you have a written policy in place? And I suggest that you do if you don't.
We will have an SOP on how we move forward with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Bentley?
Thank you Mayor. Mr. Rhodey, I think you said that we will only spend either 10 or 25% of the funds allocated to parks this year?
No, right now. Right, right now we kind of have committed.
Say that again, I was listening.
Yeah, so, so the items we have in the works right now that'll either, you know, tonight coming to the council or in future meetings coming to councils, we have, we have the shade structure, we have the signage, so the, the entry signage. We worked with the vendor, they're coming up with three designs and then they're gonna bring those designs to this council to, to make that determination. And then the other item that we have, an RFQ out for the Tallwood Park redesign. And so whatever comes out of, once we pick a company to work with on that, whatever those implementations come out of that to, to start that project. The Tallwood is gonna be a little bit of a delay because we're doing all our well work for the production well in there right now. So if you've driven by Tallwood, you've seen a lot of pipes and contractor trucks. So we're, we're not in a big hurry to get to that one just yet because we're still doing our utility work. But once that utility work is done, the only thing that'll be in Tallwood from the production well is just that 20 by 20 fenced in area. And so the, the rest of the park will be back to normal.
So are we budgeting about a million dollars a year for parks?
We have the last two years, yes sir.
And if it-
Park improvements.
If it under spends, we actually maybe spend a little over a million the following year? Is that true or not?
Is the finance director looking at me?
He was, but he looked away.
So anything not, anything not spent goes back into the reserve and then we rebudget it. So there, so there is, there is no, let's say we spend $550,000. It's not like we have $450,000 automatically in the next year. We just rebudget it. We rebudget the million.
Yeah, I was just kind of making sure we were spending about a million a year so that we get through this process fast, not spend a quarter of a million one year and then only spend 750 the next year.
We are trying, sir. We are.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. No more questions. All right, thank you, Mr. Picarello. There is a motion on the floor from Ms. Vols and a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Next is the vehicle purchase of the new 2025 Elgin RegenX Sweeper. Mr. Picarello, I can do Picarello, I can't do RegenX.
So this is, our contract ended in March. We had a contractor that used to come in and service the city. They bought the company that was originally our contractor and obviously they wanted to raise the price, but because it was the end of our contract, they kind of held it there. So this, the sweeper's been talked about for the last three or four years for the city to purchase one. So we knew if we went out to bid again for a contract, it would be substantial more than what we were paying now. So Mr. Rhodey finally agreed to move forward with purchasing a sweeper. And based on, on what we needed for, you know, we're responsible for 192 to sweep that. We know that the county really doesn't sweep Minton Road, so the, those are two roads that, you know, we want to be able to take care of.
Are you gonna be able to get that thing down 192?
It'll have to be early in the morning.
Oh, with all those bumps and stuff? I know. My front tire hit one of those things, cost me a lot of money.
So we, we found, we rented one for the past five months, different, two different types of Elgin sweepers. And obviously, the RegenX was the sweeper that we liked because it's a suction sweeper, little less mechanical parts with it than a rear broom sweeper, and we could run down a road that has no curbing. The other one has, is more for roads with curbing. So we went with this to be a little more community friendly, so we get it different, different roads throughout, throughout the city. We are purchasing it through Sourcewell. Again, we are a member of Sourcewell, just like the Sheriff's Contract. Elgin is a, is on that Sourcewell contract as a vendor, and we would like to move forward with purchasing this vehicle. We did budget $340,000 for the purchase and the sweeper itself is 339,407 to purchase it through Sourcewell.
All right, thank you, Mr. Picarello. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, Mark, do we get reimbursed or maybe just paid by the owner of 192 in Minton to sweep their street?
We, we have a contract with them, so it's, it's our responsibility. We have the contractor who does landscape cutting.
So we do get paid?
We do get a stipend from these-
Stipend?
From-
Does it cover the cost?
I'm not sure. It's, it's close.
Okay.
But it's not, I mean, it covers the landscaping, but we're responsible for tree trimming, trash pickup, and sweeping. And that's the contract we have and had with FDOT for, for years.
So it sounds like we're not getting paid for the sweeping if it's the same contract that we had in place to do all the other stuff?
So the agreement we have with FDOT, you know, we, you kind of gotta go backwards to go forwards on this. So FDOT works with local municipalities where their roads are in your community. It started with, you know, FDOT, like the county, started with Minton. They will come out and field mow once every other month and take care of their median. That's not satisfactory to a lot of local governments because we want it maintained. We want it on a, a better cycle and to look nice. And so they've set a price, a per, you know, per mile price that they pay local governments if the local government would take responsibility for the road. And by responsibility, that means just the maintenance and the aesthetics. And so that price is set by FDOT and we have a contract with them based on the linear feet of roadway that we take care of them. Very similar to the county for Minton. We get a stipend, and we call it a stipend because it, it does not equal the actual cost we pay, but the council at that time wanted Minton to look nice. They wanted it to get mowed every week, you know, mowed, trimmed and blowed every week. And so we agreed to do that and the county gives us a stipend for Minton based on the linear.
So that price isn't going up now that we're gonna sweep it as-
There is an inflationary increase that comes with both those agreements. The FDOT one is much better than the county, but I'm, I've never sat down and penciled out every penny that we've spent on 192. My guess is it comes much closer to covering the full cost, but probably does not cover the full cost. The Minton one is, is not close at all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Frampton?
Thank you Mayor. Mark, days of estimated operations per month?
Probably a week.
Just a week per month?
Yes.
Is that, is that spread out over the month or is that gonna be?
It'll be a solid week.
We'll do a solid week and, and how are you gonna handle this staffing loss to have, pool your staff to get them to work that?
Right now, our, our crew leader for parks, for Sreetch and Drainages is, has been running it. So we'll keep him on that. So it's not gonna really take too much away from the, the crew.
But in fairness, for the last five months, it's taken away from the crew, from our staffing. So-
It has, right.
So is there plans to increase the staffing by a certain percentage to cover this?
Yes.
So that would be, that would be a recommendation to look at it because I don't wanna, I don't wanna run short on other areas for the city. I appreciate that you don't want to spend the extra money. I appreciate that you don't want to spend the extra money, but we don't want to not get certain things done maintenance-wise to take care of the street sweeping, so...
Well, I was hoping part of the plan was to get the sweeper first, and then this way I could put the average in of what we would need to...
Five days doesn't seem like a lot of time to do all the roads and the communities that we serve.
True, but our contractor was only coming in two days a week.
But weren't they only mostly just doing the communities and stuff during that time?
No, they were doing every road that...
Really? Wow.
Yeah.
And on the truck itself, do we have the GPS tracking like the other company had, where you can go on as the supervisor and see where the roads have done?
Yes, all our vehicles, so that would be...
But I mean, you have a tracking program? I know they had one where you could actually track which roads were done and all that in case something was missed.
I tell you, I mean, we have...
We can, yeah, we can look into how we could implement something like that, very similar. Right now, we just have a program that we could put that vehicle in, and it'll show us, it'll map out, you know, what that vehicle's done that day. We can see about adding, kind of integrating our GPS mapping, our GIS mapping with the GPS tracking.
Do you see value in that, or is it just...
I do, and I apologize, maybe this should have been part of the packet, but I'm happy to email this out tomorrow to the council. We did distribute the cost benefit analysis for the street sweeper during the CIP process of the budget, in which we put all this, all the numbers together and all the figures. And just to remind everyone, you know, at year eight, this unit, the investment that we're making, the cost benefit comes out at year eight that we start going in the positive.
What's the life of it?
Definitely 15 years. I would think evaluation at 15 years as to how much we're putting in maintenance-wise versus what we're getting out of it, but it's certainly driving it, you know, whether it's, you know, three days a week or four days a week. Mileage will not be an issue, it'll be the maintenance of the mechanical parts.
I saw through the packet you gave us that we pretty much got all the options we could get. With it being a vacuum truck, I was curious of whether they had any available systems you can hook up to that for hose vacuums, for like, for you guys picking up leaves or anything, or if you needed to?
You can't have that option for it.
Is that something that we might want to look at? Because I know, I mean, even cleaning out, I don't know, the drainage?
Well, we use our Vaccon for that. That's a little bit more durable for doing that. If we were up north with leaves in the fall, then yeah, that would have been a great option to have, because you could just go down the side of the road with the hose and, you know, clean out the curbing, where we don't have that too much of...
Is it a significant cost, or?
I'll be honest with you, I didn't even look at it, because with the Vaccon, we use for multiple things that, you know, just throwing an extra item on that wasn't, you know...
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, the warranty's one year. Do they, have we thought about, I won't say do they offer, have we thought about whether we'd like to think about an extended warranty?
Haven't thought about it, but we could. We could look into that.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's worth it or not, and I don't know what it would cost, I just didn't know if you guys had gone through the process of looking at it.
No, but I could find that out.
All right, thank you.
The reason why we went with this company too is they are in a pocket, they're close by, great facilities, actually, it's a brand-new facilities, so we were happy with what they have and what they showed us also.
Yeah, I just want to kind of know before we buy the thing, but thank you.
Ms. McGuire.
So you mentioned it'll run for about a week out of the month. Is the plan to get all of our city streets in that week? Okay, and then you had mentioned that the previous one could only do curbs, so that's kind of the difference in the time? Okay. And then do we notify our residents, like, when we plan to be coming through, or do we just kind of go, and if they have their cars parked in the street?
We used, two years ago, we used to put signs up, but having the contractor, you know, he broke down today, or, you know, when he came through, he starts in Orlando, he comes through, he hits Melbourne, comes a couple roads around us, goes to Palm Bay, so it started being, you know, kind of a pain trying to keep up with him when he was coming, when he wasn't coming, you know? He wouldn't come two days in a row, it'd be maybe on a Monday and a Wednesday. So what we're planning to do is pick a week and make it consistent, so everybody starts getting used to that. And we could put it out in the Friday memo, we could do, you know, other things to get it out there also. But my thought is if we're doing it on a regular basis, it's us controlling it now that, you know, we could probably do, you know, the second week of every month, you know, so...
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. In that same vein of letting our residents know, hey, if we're looking at a set schedule or at least working towards one, when do we expect, with the usual delays of ordering things and things coming in, when do we expect this to be a service offered to our residents?
Tomorrow. Truck's already done. It was done in July.
Fabulous.
Yeah. Yes.
Right. But specifically, the purchase that we're looking at?
We can get this, you know, it's already done, we already have the VIN number, serial number. It was built in July, so it's been sitting up there just waiting for us, so...
I was going to say, what's the plan if we don't approve it? It's sitting there waiting for us. Thank you, sir.
We don't have a choice.
And I wanted to say thank you as well. I had been asking for this for the longest time, because I know doing this in-house, we're going to be doing a much, much better job. We used to get, in the Friday report, we used to get the weight of how much road debris had been picked up by the truck. That might have been before you came. But is that something we can go back to again, where we can actually see, we can get a weight as to how much road debris was picked up? I don't know if there's a scale in the truck, or if there's a scale or something, but...
It's a four-yard hopper, so we can know what do we have, and then when we dump it into a dumpster.
All right, this is wonderful, thank you so much. And I see you back there, Paul. I'm sure you heard that this does areas that are not curbed, so Hollywood Estates should have the sand off of their roads, which... Yes, all right. Mr. Frampton, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light came on.
I was...
You going to make the motion?
Did we get a motion?
We do not have a motion, I'm asking for that now.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion, we award the contract to Environmental Products Group, Inc., as written.
Mr. Gaylord.
One second.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton, a second from Mr. Gaylord, all in favor of purchasing this Elgin street sweeper. Please signify by saying aye. Aye, and those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Solid waste services franchise agreement, Mr. Roddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me one second, I'm flipping to my notes. I'm sorry, there we go, my apologies. Thank you very much. As noted in the staff memo, the city council briefly discussed this item a couple of meetings ago. We continue to have a challenge getting all of our residents to call in and/or go online to, for the bulk waste yard pickup. So that's the smaller yard waste goes in the brown cart, the larger piles, what we call the clam truck piles, needed to be called in in order for them to be routed by Waste Management, and then the clam truck, or the claw truck, whichever you prefer, would come out and pick up those piles. And that has been a struggle that we have had to get everybody to conform with that process. We received resident complaints about piles that have been out for a long time. Deputy Mayor Bentley has worked with his neighbors, and his neighbor in his area, we've had code enforcement hanging door hangers. We've tried, we've been in the newsletter, the Friday roundup, and it has been challenging to get the word out and to get this process going. And so during those conversations with Waste Management, the discussion was, well, are there some alternatives? And one of those alternatives would be to go to a routed clam truck pickup, and so once a week, Waste Management would route a truck that would go through every city street and pick up all the clam piles that would, so residents would not need to call those in or go online and schedule those pickups. And so, you know, an item for interesting conversation this evening, we worked, and we have our Waste Management representative present as well to be part of the conversation, but we've worked here the last two weeks on a price and have negotiated what we feel is the best price for this option, which is $1.42 a month. The question for the council this evening is, would we like to move forward with adjusting that price to go to that automatic, or I'm sorry, to go to that routed clam service pickup? Or do we want to keep going the same process that we're going now, which is residents need to call in and schedule that themselves? And so with that, I will answer any questions, or if Waste Management has any comments. I did get several questions from council members the last couple of days on this, and one of the questions, which was a very good one, actually several council members asked, and Luigi from Waste Management was able to give me that number this afternoon. The total pickups of clam truck pickups, so nothing to do with the brown cart that gets picked up every week, just the clam truck pickup was 4,268 for the year, and that's a 12-month period ending in September. So that's kind of the recent 12 months, that's, if you divide that by 12, that's about 355 clam truck pickups per month.
Wow. Mr. Frampton and Ms. Volz, do you want to ask your questions now, or wait until Mr. Chandler comes up?
If he wants to talk first, I'll wait.
Mr. Chandler, would you?
Good afternoon, Mayor. City Council's deja vu. Happy to see you all again. Jordan Chandler, Government Affairs Manager for WM. To Mr. Roddy's point, thanks staff, and Deputy Mayor Bentley has worked very diligently over the past, I would say, couple of months to try and figure out an alternative solution to this problem that continues to exist. You know, we have ultimately had numerous conversations, but unfortunately, the only resolve that there seems to be is to moving to routed clam yard waste once a week. Just also one point of clarification to add on to what Mr. Roddy said, those 4,268 piles of clam yard waste, that number is also not inclusive of those who did not call those piles in or follow the online service. We don't have a way of being able to actually calculate those, but I would say there's probably quite a few of those as well. So that number could be potentially a little bit higher than that 4,268. Those are just the tickets that ultimately came in the system that were generated and that we ultimately knew that we serviced.
So what he's referencing is during our numerous meetings with Waste Management, staff or deputy mayor would hand a list of addresses with piles, and Waste Management would immediately get those picked up. And so those wouldn't per se be tickets that went through the system, those would just be items that we gave Waste Management.
You didn't have to put a ticket in to, for your driver to know to go pick them up?
So there were addresses that were ultimately calculated, I said, Deputy Mayor, council member, Deputy Mayor Bentley would travel throughout the neighborhood, and he ultimately drafted a list of residents that had piles that were out, and so we didn't generate a ticket since we had that list, we just ultimately went and serviced those piles based on the list that was presented.
Mr. Frampton.
I don't have any questions.
You'd like to?
Somebody else has a question. I have a question.
Okay. Ms. Volz.
Yes, I do have a question. The clam trucks, if they're driving around the neighborhood and they see something, they just don't bother picking it up?
There you go.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Why?
It's on-call, and so...
Why?
That's ultimately what was negotiated. I wasn't part of those previous negotiations when this went out to bid in 2023, but the on-call service is, the residents have to call it in. Ultimately, it's a, full candor, it's a cheaper rate if it's an on-call service. The residents call that service in, it's ticketed, and you go out and you actually service that pile. Ultimately, the way this particular service would work, to Mr. Roddy's point, is...
No, I understand how that would work, but I don't think, and I know it's only $1.42 a month, but if we put $1.42 here and $3 and something on the water bill, and we just start adding everything up, probably in our neighborhood, I don't know that we've ever had any clam trucks come over there, maybe one or two in the 23 years that I've lived there. And so why should we have to pay $1.42 for Pat's neighborhood? Because Pat's neighborhood is really wild with overgrowth of stuff, you know? I just don't think it's right to the rest of the neighbors and the neighborhood in West Melbourne, and like I said, it's $1.42, it's not much money, but you add that on top of the $3, and then God knows what else, and then pretty soon, people are paying a whole lot more for absolutely nothing. I would be absolutely getting nothing out of this, and Andrea would get nothing out of this, she lives in the same neighborhood, and there's a whole lot of people that still wouldn't get anything out of it, except Pat. So I'm blaming you, Pat, on this.
My light on, so...
Anyway, I am not in favor of this, and I know it's only $1.42, but I am not going to be supporting it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me say, my neighborhood's not on the list.
Because you've got to take care of now.
No, I'm just saying, I put it in, so that's not part of the ones that I've made lists on. Anybody probably north, I'm going to make this up, but it's about, anybody north of probably 192 has more mature trees than a lot of the newer communities, and so therefore have a lot more what we would call yard trash. But also want to point out that, but over a period of a few years, all those neighborhoods will catch up. Until this year, we've always done it that way. We switched this year, and I think it's a mistake that we did, but we learned a lesson there. It's not only yard trash, it's anything. People that put mattresses out, people that put furniture out, people that put anything out live in every community, not mine, and certainly not the ones north of 192. So it's not yard trash that they're picking up, they're any bulk pickup.
Right. But is it not the responsibility of the homeowner?
Yes.
To call?
Yes, it is, and...
You still had to call for furniture, Pat. I mean, that's the... You've still got to schedule one, right?
But let me finish, let me finish. To answer your question, I'll go ahead and answer that one now. Now, we're going back to what we had a year ago, and what that will do is, anything that's on a curb, they'll pick, that's over the limit, you know, a few cubic feet or whatever it is, they will pick up, doesn't matter what it is. what it is. I can guarantee you the current system is not working. And it's, you can go to any neighborhood and you'll see stuff. I went to many of the gated communities and the same thing. It's just not, people don't know they have to call. And I can't tell you how many times we've put it in the newsletter. We've told people, we put door knockers out. People still, when you go to their house and say, hey, what's, what's going on here? Oh, I didn't know I have to do that. And it's, what are they going to do to, but it's not, it's not working. And, and again, it, don't think it's my community that we're doing because my community gets picked up because I make sure that where you put our stuff in. But that's not true for, for, for most of West Melbourne. And, and it's every community that has stuff that goes to the curb. What they're saying now is they'll go back to the old way, that they will pick up anything they see when they see it. Right now, they drive straight past it and don't stop. And it's, to me, it's just insane, but I understand it's what we signed up for. So we're just simply saying, go back to the system because our residents aren't complying no matter how many times we ask. The other thing that's still going to be an issue that we, somehow we still need to communicate is people are putting stuff on the curb that don't meet the square footage rule, it's a very small amount, and they're not using brown containers. I don't know how we tell people that, but I can guarantee you, code enforcement has bent to all these people and they still don't do it. So it's, that's, that's still a challenge that we're going to have to overcome is to get people to put small amounts of stuff, I heard your bell go on, put small amount of stuff into the brown containers because that's the only way that we get picked up. But we're saying for a buck and a half a month or a little less, and, and it was four times that or three times that a few weeks ago. So this has been an ongoing process to get the price to this. It gives the entire city all total pickup anytime they see anything. So.
Okay. Is that it, Mr.?
Tammy, do I leave anything out, Mr. Rhodey?
No, I, I think, I think we are at the heart of this discussion, right? I think the heart of this discussion is there are definitely some neighborhoods and some residences who are, who don't use the clam service, who, who would be paying additional cost to get the routed clam service. The, the reverse side of that is the process, the process that we're doing now is not working well. It, that, that is clear. The complaints, you know, certainly come into City Hall and, and our staff does a good job of, of walking people through how to submit them or submitting them ourselves. Our code enforcement has submitted them themselves. Deputy Mayor has done, earned way more than what a deputy mayor makes in the time and effort that he's spent.
Tammy Neal?
Our, our staff, Tammy Neal puts, you know, we, we, it's not uncommon. So at around twelve, you get locked out of the system, you can't submit anymore. And so it's not uncommon for her to get locked out after submitting twelve requests. You know, the, the computer system sees that it's the same IP address submitting and so that it, it, it doesn't allow you to submit another one. And so we, you know, this is a challenge and we're trying to find solutions to the challenge. The initial step was communication. We just thought if we could communicate with people and get the word out and, and people, we, we don't have this, this issue with mattresses, we don't have this issue with, with bedsets and dressers and things that people put out for some reason. They instinctively know that they have to do something about that. We, we don't have that issue. But for, for these clam pile, you know, for these clam piles, we, we do have the issue and, and maybe part of that issue is it's just been for so long, you were able to just put it out and it would disappear and we changed that process. Or it's just new people coming in that aren't doing it. We're, we'd love to know what the problem is, what, what that lack of communication is to get those people, to get those residents to do that. But that, that hasn't worked so far. And so this is an alternative solution. Council Gaylord has raised an interesting question to me on the side here, which I, I think is a very interesting one and I want to mention. I'm stealing his thunder. At the approximate eighty-seven hundred residential customers at a buck forty-two a month, it would be cheaper to hire a city employee to go around and put all these into the system than that dollar amount. That dollar amount is approximately a hundred and forty-seven thousand a year, the dollar forty-two times the eighty-seven hundred customers. That is an interesting item he has raised.
So are we pulling?
Fundamentally, I don't like the way it sounds that we need to hire somebody to go around and put in these requests.
Well, the other part of the time, they can sweep streets.
But from a, from a cost benefit analysis, that is cheaper. With benefits and the use of a city vehicle, it would not be a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Are we postponing this?
It's an interesting question. That, that, that I did not see coming. So. I, I would, I would have to give that some thought. I see our Waste Management Representative would like to speak.
No, I, I just have one point of clarification and I, I think Councilmember Frampton was going there. And, and I would have to get clarity on this because my understanding was that the dollar forty-two that was presented was specifically for routed clam yard waste, not to include the bulky waste collection, which would be those other furniture items.
Which was always our process before. You had to call in for furniture pickup and stuff and it had nothing to do with the yard waste. So that's why I questioned.
Correct. And it's very, that, that service is much more infrequent. That is, as, as we all live and, and, no, we don't, you know, we don't throw away mattresses and dressers at a frequency that we.
Let's hope not.
Trim, trim the, you know, trim the old oak and palm prawns and those kinds of things. So.
Ms. McGuire?
Sorry, my brain isn't. Um, do, does anybody know what we were paying before we changed the contract to take the clam off?
So, so in order to go forward, we need to go backwards. So we had a very good rate with Waste Management of our previous contract. We went out to RFP and this is the current going rate. I will say this rate, with the exception of some of the communities that are at the end of their seven-year agreements, this rate is a very comparable rate for Brevard County for, for the service that we get. So it's, I, I don't think we're the cheapest. I, I certainly know we're not the most expensive. So we, it's hard to compare our old rate because we had a very good rate up until we went out to the process to get a new rate, do an RFP for a new rate.
Ms., Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. My curiosity has piqued in terms of a potential cost differential between an employee versus changing the contract, but I understand that's not something we're going to have numbers on at this moment. I would be curious about that. However, what we're seeing now with the system, which we all recognize is not working efficiently for many of our residents, is that requests are being submitted into the system. I know I've had residents show me their proof for multiple requests. I've talked with Tammy on the regular. I mean, God bless her, she probably talks to Waste Management on the daily from residents and council members that are calling to let them know either a pickup was missed or I've submitted pickups and I haven't heard from anyone, you know, or they just don't know the process. And she's great about educating our residents about this is how you go online, this is how you submit it. She's very good at walking them through that. All of that being said, I don't know if it was Mr. Rhodey in our meeting or a previous conversation with Waste Management, but I believe there was recognition that even some of the requests that are being submitted are not always processed or there tends to be a glitch and sorry, it was missed, we'll try to come back out. But we have to stay on top of those things. I wouldn't say that system is inherently effective or efficient, just the way from what we see from a residential side. So if we're going to potentially, and I say potentially because I'm looking towards Mr. Rhodey in terms of what he's thinking with a potential another option of looking at a city employee who might put in those into the system, I hesitate to ask how effective that will be if their system has shown that it's not working the correct way. And I'm not sure what the solution to that is. I don't know if there's a way to change or update your system, just because even if we're submitting it online or we're having city staff try to call to address these issues, there seems to still be a miscommunication between the system and the pickup.
Yeah, let, let me just address that. And I, I think we discussed it last City Council meeting. One of the things that I noticed as a part of checking some of these tickets that were put in but never addressed, there, there were quite a few. I, I wouldn't say there were twenty, thirty of them, maybe a handful of them that I uncovered, but one is too many, where the clam truck was dispatched or routed really outside of the, the, the ten-day window, whatever the case may be, as, as it relates to when a ticket, the time a ticket is put in to when that pile should be serviced. I, I'm more than certain that if a ticket is put in, I can see it on my end. I drive through some of these streets now that we've been having these conversations quite frequently. I'm a, they, they might think I'm stalking people on Sheridan and going down Sylvan and all these streets, just looking at piles and going back in the system to check and see if they were, if they were actually called in to put a ticket. Nine times out of ten, they're not. But then what I do, just like the Deputy Mayor, I take the initiative to then put a ticket in to make sure that pile is addressed, right? And so we have addressed with our customer service.
So you're telling me Waste Management wants to send somebody to drive around West Melbourne to put those in?
No.
That's what I think I'm hearing.
I don't, I, I would not want to put that burden on myself. And, and I'm sure obviously the city doesn't either, but you know, we, we want to do whatever's necessary to be able to, to address these concerns and we're more than happy, whatever the direction of council is, we're going to, to work to address it. Also, let me just say one quick thing. We did create these, this is a, a new thing that we're going to start putting out. It, it will actually be like a stake. If you see like Truly Nolan or something, anytime they service a property, there will be a stake near a pile. If the pile is too small, it should be containerized. One of the things we've, you know, realized is that maybe tagging is not the best system because it's been quite windy lately. Tags can blow away and that means that we can potentially be derelict of our duty. And so we are changing up the game a little bit and we don't think this can be missed by a resident, right? If it's staked in the ground next to the pile, you know that, that pile should be containerized, right? And so trying to take some additional steps here to just address some of those ancillary things that are out there, but I just wanted to address that and throw that out there.
So you're going to go to the pile and stake it with a card and not pick up?
No. Those piles that are too small, they should be containerized.
No, but you're going to go there and not pick it up. If you're there, why not just pick it up and, and leave the card behind? I'm just, just trying to figure out the logic.
Mayor, before I wrap up my commentary, Mr. Rhodey, how much time would you need to get council information on a potential other option that was discussed tonight? Just because I, I hear what he's saying and ultimately a dollar forty-two for pickup, if it solves the resident's issue, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I feel like we would not be responsible for not exploring all of our options to then make the best decision moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could certainly have something on the next council agenda. I think, you know, to me, to me, the, the question that keeps coming back is the irony of hiring an employee to do something that.
Ought to be done.
That ought to be.
Somebody else should be doing.
That, that's, that's the great irony, right?
Wouldn't that be code enforcement?
Well, we have had code enforcement, but, but code enforcement is also doing, you know.
Code enforcement is currently putting the tickets into the system?
They, they are tagging the carts and putting them into the system when people aren't following the, the process.
Do you know how many city employees, this was not on my question list tonight, do you know how many city employees we have currently involved in trying to address the issue? I'm just curious because I only knew of some, but the web is getting wider.
You know, code, code enforcement is certainly not doing it full-time. You know, that, that is not their full-time role.
Understood.
And then, you know, my administrative assistant, Tammy Neal, is dealing with the, the bulk of the coordination. And so I can't tell you how many meetings we've had about this. I'd guess north of ten internally and externally with, with Waste Management. So I, I am happy to bring, I'm happy to bring that, the, the cost comparison option back. You know, I, I still think part of, part of the issue is there's, there's a group of residents that would, I think, very much value the routed service for the, for the dollar forty-two. And then there's a group of residents that don't use it who would not value that. I mean, that's the, that, that's the crux of the issue that I think still remains.
I mean, in my opinion, it sounds silly to say we're going to, we even consider hiring an employee to then put things into the system that we're asking residents to put in. But ultimately, if we're considering potentially that or changing our franchise agreement.
That, that same argument exists for an employee, that we're, we're hiring an employee, we're, we're adding cost to the organization with that same dilemma. For some people who would very much appreciate that because their pile would disappear and they would like that service and for other employees who don't, or for other residents who don't use that, we're hiring an employee to do that, that work. And so I think that, that dilemma will remain in effect.
Mr. Gaylord?
Mayor, forgive me if this isn't the right way to phrase this, but I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion until Mr. Rhodey can prepare the cost benefit analysis.
Well, we, there's a few questions and things we have coming up on this, but generally, if you're going to table, we have to stop everything.
Can we, can we hold off on that? Because I have a question for him. It seems like.
Frampton's been waiting forever.
So have I.
Is that, was, is, was that what you wanted to say?
Yeah, no, that was it.
Okay. Mr. Frampton, you've been waiting for a long time?
Yeah. So you say a dollar forty-two is not a whole lot of money. It's about five percent more. We were just complaining about the 10% more with the, the water. Now we're adding on another 5% and then we, we raise costs all the time, you know? The, the water. Anyhow, it just seems ridiculous that we have four thousand two hundred and sixty-eight people that are complying with our new change. We have eighty-seven hundred people that we service here. We have, what, a couple, maybe a hundred or so a month that aren't complying? Well, maybe we need to do a better job or, or just, I, I don't know, let it build up in their yard. I, you know, there's, we're not, to, to penalize all of our residents by charging them more because a couple hundred people are not doing the right thing is absurd to me. And, and just, and the majority of our, our properties are made up in communities and the communities aren't having these problems. It's, it's, you know, the, the ones that, like Pat said, the mature properties that have been there forever and they just don't want to follow the rules. So we're going to reward them. Y'all are talking about rewarding them by charging everybody else more money because they're not doing the right thing. I, I just, you know, it's eighty-nine people per week that are actually doing the right thing. I just, you know, it's 89 people per week that are actually doing the right thing. And I just don't understand it. I don't understand why we would even consider doing this at penalizing all of our residents. And let me just note that the reason we got to the point is we struggled really hard to get the costs down because, two factors. Waste management came in mid-contract and asked us to raise the rates, and we did that because of COVID or, you know, all the extra costs they had. And we did that with no quid pro quo. We just gave them more money, you know, which I voted against. And now I'm told that they're not even happy with the dollar 42 cents. So after our four-year contract, that's going to be even more money in four years that they're going to want for this service. We negotiated that down, from what I'm told, Mr. Rhodey, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but that was negotiated down, and they actually wanted more for this service. So when it comes time to the new contract, that's going to be even more money. So to do this now is just ridiculous. I'm sorry. I don't support it. Thank you.
Ms. Foltz.
If waste management cannot handle the number of complaints or calls that come in, what is your process for changing that?
I don't think it's a matter of not being able to handle the complaints that come in.
But they're not doing their job. They're not answering all of them.
I think...
Yeah, Councilman, I think the challenge is there are a group of residents who are not calling their piles in and not making waste management aware of those piles.
Right, I understand, but you said that Tammy was calling in a lot of these, and those aren't getting a response?
We think waste management does a good job of, once it's in the system, it getting picked up timely. It's not a perfect system. It, you know, I'm not going to, I don't even think our waste management representative would say it's 100% perfect system, but it's certainly a good system. We know for a fact that we put in tickets, the pile gets picked up because we follow up, and people say, yep, they came and got the pile. And so we know that that system works pretty good. The challenge is getting people to call in.
Right.
Waste management or to go online to schedule that.
I understand that, but if we're going to come back here in two weeks, and we're going to talk about whatever, I think if you could come back and tell us how you could help make things more efficient for our residents in that, you know, when, like, if I, if my neighbor has a pile of stuff, I am not allowed to call because it's not mine. Is that, you can call for your neighbor?
Absolutely.
Oh, I was told you couldn't do that, so, I don't have any neighbors that have any piles of stuff, so I don't know. I've never done it. But it just seems like there's something off with your system as far as picking up. And if the clam truck driver drives by a huge pile and he sees it, and even if he doesn't pick it up, if he writes a note and said, oh, we're going to go back and pick this one up, do they do that? They don't do it, but maybe they should, you know? And it may help everybody all around. Just my thoughts, and I'm not going to be supporting a dollar 42 either.
Okay, well, this was a good discussion. Don't have any more lights on, Mr. Gaylord.
But this is what, I mean, this is what we wanted. I mean, this is, we're trying, I give waste management credit, I mean, we're trying to find a solution to this challenge.
Okay, so I also wanted to mention that when people combine their yard trash and, say, Lemon Grove, for instance, and they put it in the front of a vacant lot because it's vacant, it's not bothering anyone, that doesn't get picked up at all because there's no property address for anyone to call it in to. And to Ms. Foltz's point, if you go online and you try to put someone else's yard waste in, yes, you can do that, but if you call in and speak to a person, they won't let you call someone else's in. They tell you, you can't, it has to be yours, just...
And you're absolutely correct, Mayor, and let me just say this, any of you have access to me, if there's a pile out there on a vacant lot, that is my job, right? I'm here to be a good community partner. I don't want to see piles out there no more than you do, right? I want them picked up, and so whatever we can do to efficiently and effectively get these piles picked up, as long as we're operating within the bounds of our contractual obligations, more than happy to do that. And I implore you all, reach out to me. Reach out to me.
Okay, Mr. Frampus?
And I'm guessing that the city would handle anything left on a vacant lot as well. So, Mr. Rhodey, I know we talked about tabling this, but is this something that you just want to bring back? I mean, do you even have to table it? I mean, is it nothing? Or do you want it to go to a vote? What are you looking for?
It's an interesting, I don't have a person budgeted, so...
I don't want that.
That would be an item that I would need to come forward to get a budget amendment to create that position if we go in that direction. And so I know it's a little uncomfortable right now that we're in a...
Do you want it to go to a vote?
I think we need to vote...
I don't want to vote it.
Can we just pull this off? Just pull this off the agenda and come back the next time.
I don't want to vote it. Are you done? I was going to speak.
Well, okay, you happen to be the next speaker. Someone else pulls their card.
Thank you. I'm just incredibly disappointed with waste management. And we've, I know we've worked and had all these meetings, and for you guys to drive past a pile that you see there and not write it up or not pick it up, and then when we have the discussion, you say, well, if we picked up all the piles that we see, and it's, I know you, this area north of the interstate or north of 192 is getting picked on, but I guarantee you, it's everywhere. I've made lists, but that's something for some other day. But to drive past something and not pick it up and say, well, if we pick that up, then we won't be able to meet the other things on schedule. You guys aren't a schedule anyway. I've put stuff in the system personally, and they didn't come out on the day that they promised me online. So they did come out eventually and get it, so that's fine. But to use that as the argument that says, well, we don't want to pick up that because we'll mess up our schedule, and we won't get to someone that was, that actually followed the process. I don't know. We didn't have this problem under the old way we're doing it, and I don't know, I'm just really, really disappointed, and that's just the way it is right now. That's the way it goes.
Mr. Frampus?
I don't think this should cost us more money.
Pat, I seriously don't understand why you're upset with waste management. When we made the decision, be upset with us because we're the one that put us in this position. If you didn't want it, you shouldn't have voted for it back then.
I don't think we even understood that this was going to be a problem.
We knew we were going to save money.
Hold on, one person at a time, and I have Ms. Adams in between you two.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh-oh, not anymore, she bailed.
I'm just saying that we can't put all the blame...
Mr. Frampus, it's Mr. Bentley's turn to talk, so hold on.
I thought you gave me the floor.
No, it's Mr. Bentley's still his turn to talk.
He was responding to me.
I can be disappointed. I'm allowed to be. And that doesn't mean I'm right, just means I'm disappointed. Let me finish, and then you can have it. I didn't understand the impact of this decision when we switched the service to this. I didn't realize, and I think I know the number because I've been involved with this, it's a whole lot bigger than what you're saying there, but, you know, it's just nits I'm not willing to pick at. There's a lot of people that don't follow the process, trying to educate however, 32,000 residents and maybe 10,000 different houses. Good luck with that. And I am actually out there weekly on many of the neighborhoods, seeing stuff that's going on. You guys, I don't know if you just don't see it, you don't pay attention, I'm kind of looking for it right now when I drive around all these, or riding my bike around all these neighborhoods. And it's in every neighborhood. It may be more with the people that have more mature trees that live on that side, but I think eventually it's going to catch everybody. This is a problem that every year is going to become more and more for all neighborhoods. So I'm allowed to be, I get what you're saying, that this is what we signed up to, and we're trying to save money. Well, in my view, it came back and bit us on this one, and it's your turn, Steve, I guess, unless the mayor has someone else.
No, no, we do, but I know...
You gave up the floor before and then jumped back in.
I messed up on you. I'm sorry, Mr. Frampus, that was my fault.
And the numbers I used were the actual numbers that were following procedure, not the ones that aren't following procedure, the 4,268 that actually called in and ticket numbers were put out. They're the numbers that I was using. Yeah.
Put in of that 4,000.
He says none.
No.
Well, you're talking about Tammy putting ticket numbers in.
Tammy and me and others.
Is there a way to stop that cutoff at 12 or 16 or whatever?
To increase the cap?
Yeah, for, or just not to have a cap for the city employee.
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
That was one of the things that Mr. Rhodey brought to our attention. I was unaware of that, that there was a cap, and so he and actually another municipality raised that, so we're working on trying to get that addressed.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, 10,000, you said we have 8,700 customers, right?
8,700 residential units.
So where did the number of over 10,000 come up? I don't know, but, like I said, we adjusted our numbers down because of the high cost of this. We gave up holidays. We don't collect on holidays anymore. We brought, I mean, by all means, if you want to, we had a number of, what, $37 that we were working with per household that we were trying to reduce down? I mean, it was up into the high 30s.
We got, the initial RFP from waste management was a higher number. Waste management came to this council, and there was discussion back and forth how to get that number down.
I'm talking about the new contract.
And the new contract and that, and the number that we ultimately landed on was mutually agreed upon.
And don't forget that this contract's going to go up as high as the CPI is every year.
That's right.
So it's not, it's not just when the contract expires in four years, it's going up every year because don't think that waste management is not going to come back and say, I need the CPI raise, or I don't need it, because they are. And put that on top of the dollar 42, and, you know, I just, we need to look at this a different way.
Ms. Adams. Thank you, Mr. Frampus.
Thank you. I figured I would wait for their discussion to finish rather than jumping in the middle. Initially, I, you know, when you look at the numbers and you say, okay, a dollar 42 cents would solve some residence problems about the pickup, especially as it's something that this council has talked about quite a bit, and I know city staff has tried to work out the problems. The initial perspective I took on it is that sounds like a low cost to solve a potential community problem that I think generally our residents would say, we agree to solving community problems. However, I didn't consider, from Mr. Frampus's perspective, that it could, it could be seen by residents who do follow the procedures and do put in the tickets and their things get picked up, that it could be seen as them being penalized and saying, well, wait a minute, we've been following the procedure, we've been doing what we need to, why is our bill going up? Especially considering we know, year after year, these costs are going to go up in our contracts. I don't believe we're ever going to see something go down in a contract negotiation in terms of waste pickup. I just don't think that's realistic. So I appreciate the change of perspective that I hadn't initially considered. Mr. Chandler, I appreciate for the past few meetings and in the discussions you've had with staff and Deputy Mayor Bentley. I'm sure this is not an easy thing to try to come and have these discussions with us, and I know you hear our frustration. We hear directly from our residents, our staff hears directly from our residents, and we care, and that's why we're trying to figure out how do we solve their problem without it being something that affects the entire community if the majority of our community is following the protocols and getting this done. The longer I think about it, sitting here, I really don't love the idea of adding another staff position for something like this. It just doesn't, even if it saved us money versus looking at something like this agreement amendment, neither of these options sound great for our community at large. If we know the numbers of the problem and we know, I wouldn't even say generally where they're located, because I don't believe it's just north of 192 or just a certain section of West Melbourne, I think you could find these missed pickups or these lack of calls being called in or put online. I think they're going to be found throughout the city. Knowing that we've already tried resident communication through our city channels of the roundup, putting out anything we can in the newsletter, we're trying ways to reach our residents, we're hearing back, it's not working. The numbers are saying we're still having this issue. Short of these two other options that we're discussing tonight, and I don't currently love either of them, Mr. Rhodey, what else do we do?
Can I say something?
It's not great.
It has been in the water bill. It has been in the water bill, it has been in the newsletter, and it has been in multiple Friday roundups.
But if we don't love raising our contract price, and I don't know how the rest of council feels about potentially adding another staff employee, but if we don't love either of these two options, I mean, does it then just fall to code enforcement and say, we're just going to continue trying to bug people until the problem is fixed, even though we've got recognition that sometimes the system glitches or things aren't entered correctly, and they are trying to work to let staff input more?
And we have to acknowledge that's always going to happen.
Right.
Just like, you know, eventually on recycling day, the garbage truck breaks down and people don't get picked up till the next day. I mean, those kinds of, when you're dealing with people and equipment, there's going to be some error.
Right, but we're not hearing it about...
But it's minor, right? That error is minor and easily corrected. It's the challenge of getting people to call in their piles so that they can get on the list so that we can monitor that to get picked up.
So how do we help? Even, I mean, I know it's not me being facetious, even if there's seven of us here on council, I mean, is it something that we should divide up the city and try to just take your portion and try to help out the residents who live there by calling those in? Something where our residents are supported, but we're not necessarily asking them to pay more?
Yeah, I think...
I know I just volunteered council to do that, but I, it sounds like Deputy Mayor Bentley's already been doing that.
We have tried the carrot. The stick option is at our disposal as well. So we could adjust the code to be more aggressive and quicker in fining residents who don't take care of their pile.
Have you finished, Ms. Adams?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, I have a suggestion. Those little cards that you're going to put out for people to put their stuff in the brown containers, if somebody drives by and sees a pile, can you not put something on there that says to call for a pickup? Yeah, yeah, but that, I'm just saying, you see a larger pile, and those aren't going to go in the brown containers, but you're going to put those cards for a smaller pile. Can you get something that you could put on a larger pile that says, call for a pickup?
Yeah, I don't see why there's a problem. I'll have to get with the operations team or route managers to...
I mean, because if you're going to do for the small, there would be no reason why you couldn't do for the big. Those seem to be, those seem to be the bigger problem. So, just a suggestion. So, just a suggestion.
Mr. Frampis?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to make a motion that we do not authorize the city manager, manager to amend the current Waste Services contract with Waste Management, and we look into other options.
All right.
I have a second.
Hold on. Ms. McGuire, I just lost you off of my list. Did you have a question? You want to get a second first, and then you can ask your question?
I have a second.
We have a second by Ms. Volz, apparently. Okay. Ms. McGuire, do you have a question?
That's not on, okay. Less, I guess, of, it is kind of a question. Would we really have to amend the code? Isn't that already in our code? It's like, I served on code for a year.
Yeah. So, it's interesting, because Councilmember Adams called me today about an inquiry that she had had, which caused me to look into this just by pure happenstance. And it's only a code violation to the extent that there, if, if there's yard debris that's kind of gathered up into a pile, right? So, if it's naturally occurring because it falls off a tree, it's not a violation. But once you move it into a pile or some, you know, manipulate it in some way that it creates a, essentially a pile of debris, then it is. So, we already have the tools in the code to go after people who have piles of debris in their yard. The question then becomes, do we want to make that a, a policy decision to, to go to the police department and the code enforcement officers and tell them, "We're going to start looking out for this, and we're going to be fairly aggressive about, you know, for a couple of months, giving warnings and, and telling people that they're going to have to do it, and then start citing them if they don't."
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, if it's a problem for less than the majority, then it does seem like it needs to be a code issue, and that we do need to get stricter on that.
All right, that's it? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to not authorize the city manager. Is that correct?
He wanted a direction, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to give it to him. So, you wanted it official, right? I mean, what do you...
Yeah, I, I, I always appreciate a vote, right? I...
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
I mean, sometimes we're doing something that everybody is, you know, excited to do, and it's obvious, but a, a vote is an action.
All right, so, we still have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampis, and a second by Ms. Volz. All those in favor of not approving this, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries 7-0 to not do something. Okay? All right, next item, due diligence for potential property acquisition.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members, this item before you is, we are getting to the, what I will call the final stage of the property acquisition. The due diligence has been completed. The, the one outstanding item is still the state, for lack of a better term, waiving, waiving its mineral rights for the site. We have Attorney Carey has been working with the property attorney on that process and its paperwork process, and all indications are that it is in the pipeline to be completed. And so, as we approach a couple key items, one being the due diligence period for our purchase of this site, and ultimately, the second one being wanting to schedule this closing so that we can close on this property, we are bringing this item for, for essential final action of the council to authorize the city manager to purchase this piece of property. And so, happy to answer any questions. Due diligence process went very well, you know, listed in, in the staff memo, all the items that we went through, everything has come back clean. And so, we are, we are at a point where if the letter were to arrive on, on the city attorney's desk tomorrow, we would essentially be ready to close, and so that's why we're asking to authorize the city manager to close on the property contingent of the final waiving of the state's mineral rights.
I, I believe the most, the recommended motion also includes a request to authorize the city manager to enter into an extension, should it become necessary, because we are getting near the end of the option period. And we got a report from the attorney for the landowners, the, that the state has requested additional information that might slow it down a little bit. He said nothing that should hold it up, but it may move it past the, the deadline. And so, we would also like a request, or to you to authorize him to enter into an extension, should it be necessary.
Thank you. Ms. Volz?
Yes, I was going to make a motion that we go ahead and authorize the city manager to purchase the parcel known as the Shield Property, located in Mitten Road, south of the community park. And included with that is the extension of the contract.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampis?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Volz, we have a second from Mr. Frampis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you. Next is council reports. Mr. Frampis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. 24th, went to the Parks and Rec meeting. They had a good productive meeting there. And on 30th, went to Pineapple Cove, walked through with most of the council, and, and that was a, a pretty nice time that we saw, took, wrote, read his poems in some of the classes, and a lot of cute kids, and, and the teachers seemed to be pretty awesome as well. So, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, a couple things. In terms of the groundbreaking, I think it was the first groundbreaking I've seen where they moved the dirt inside the auditorium for the school because of the weather. So, that was a, a first experience for me. The Florida League of Cities held their first set of legislative committee meetings in terms of each of the committees, meeting with elected officials from around Florida, trying to brainstorm what their policy positions are going to be moving forward to the upcoming legislative session. So, I, I know that those went well. I, I know we have a couple people who volunteered to serve on a couple of those committees, so we've still got two remaining committee meetings upcoming, so those will continue moving forward. I also went to the Ellis Road Widening Project meeting that was held a few days ago. I, I know that we had city leadership there, as well as a couple West Melbourne residents. The presentation in terms of the information they shared was interesting. I know we've heard most of it being on council and hearing about this project quite often. I do think they have an ambitious timeline, just seeing how most projects get delayed and drawn out, but I am cautiously optimistic. If they're able to stick to that timeline, I think it'll be good. Third, October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as noted by our Jacobs team and a couple other members wearing pink for this month. And I know I brought it up last year, but the numbers in terms of new diagnoses in terms of breast cancer only continue to seem to go up, especially in Florida. In 2024, the most recent numbers they were looking at was 23,000 new diagnoses for that year, which just blows my mind. And so, just a annual reminder for the month of October, the Florida Department of Health does have here in Brevard County, early detection screenings and things like that. So, just a reminder to residents. I know our police department has some pink awareness going on for Breast Cancer Month. And if you haven't been inside of our West Melbourne post office, almost the entirety of their inside is pink this month. I did not expect that when I walked in the other day. Looking real quick at my other notes, I just had two quick recognitions. Councilmember McGuire won a grant for her business through WeVenture in the last few days, and so she was in the top three spots, and then her business won as number one, so I thought that was awesome for her. And then, I know, it's awesome. And then, Mr. Rhodey won the 2025 Outstanding Local Public Official Award. That goes specifically for planning efforts. And it's my understanding he was nominated by Kristi Fisher on our staff. But that's a very good recognition for him, but also on behalf of our city for the work that he does. So, I just wanted to recognize him for that. I did have a resident ask me, "What does he do in, in specifics that would earn him this recognition?" And so, stay tuned. That information will be shared in the weekly roundup come Friday, where that information's going to be shared in terms of his award. So, I was just excited for him and wanted to recognize both of them for their work in the last few days. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Volz. All right, and Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just want to say congratulations for the award. That's really cool that Mr. Rhodey won that, so thanks for what you do here at the city. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaylord?
Just echoing Mr. Bentley and Ms. Adams' comments, congratulations on your award, Mr. Rhodey. And also, the FLC legislative committees are, the next meeting is coming up on the 17th, so looking forward to that, and learning a lot about the different issues and priorities that the other cities have. So, that's a good time. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire?
I also attended the Pineapple Cove opening. I've known John Moran for many, many years, been a big fan of Pineapple Cove for many, many years. And it was the first time he's actually ever given a speech at any of his openings, or just anything in general. So, it was, it was nice to actually see him get up and give a speech, and it just goes to show, you know, how excited they are for those new classrooms and for the theater to open. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I did all of those things, the groups, and also presented at the Legislative Delegation and asked for 1.5 million to come back to the city, a million for our water plant, and a half million for a new box culvert at Doherty, where it goes under Henry. And that was loads of fun, up there with all of our senators and representatives. And so, that was, that was a, a very nice event. And so, that's what I've done since our last meeting. Anything else, and we'll move on to management reports. Management reports, Mr. Rhodey?
Thank you for the kind words, and it's always dangerous to compliment one of your seven bosses, because I think this council does an amazing job, but I, I think the mayor did a fantastic job at the Brevard delegation. Thankfully, the delegation was very receptive to the mayor's request, and unlike some of the other communities that went before us and after us, there was no arguing with our request. So, the mayor did a very good job in, in, in doing that, and we will continue to follow that process as it goes along through the state budget. So, we're appreciative of, of her efforts and other efforts for the, for those dollars. Just wanted to say one thing I am looking forward to. I know a lot of the council will be attending the Gay, the Diamond Royale, Diamond Royale for Promise, fundraiser for Promise of Brevard, and I understand tickets are still available, but I will, myself and my lovely wife can finally attend that event this, this weekend, so we're looking forward to that.
Okay, Mr. Carey?
And just a general reminder, if you have anything donated to you, there are ethics forms to fill out, or you can pay down the amount of what's donated to below the statutory amount, if you'd like to do that through a donation. So, if you have any questions about that, feel free to call me. I can kind of get lost in the shuffle when you're doing these things, but, you know, as elected officials, you do have reporting requirements. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Any other, all right. I hope the meeting is adjourned.